Okay, let's begin. Once a year, the City Council is required to convene as the Lancaster Housing Authority and take certain actions. We will call the Housing Authority meeting to order first, take care of the necessary items on the agenda, then we will adjourn, call the regular meeting to order of the City Council Redevelopment Agency and the Financing Authority. So it's called to order the Housing Authority. City Clerk, roll call.
Authority members, Chris?
Present.
Marcus?
Here.
Man?
Present.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Chairman Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Any items on the Authority Consent Calendar you need to pull?
No, sir.
Any speaker cards?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second?
I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar for the Housing Authority.
Second that.
There's a second? Okay, let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, let's call the... So we're adjourned. Let's call the City Council meeting and the Redevelopment Agency and Financing Authority to order. City Clerk?
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Chris?
Present.
Man?
Present.
Marcus?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight will be by Naringan Singh, who is on the Human Relations Commission for the City of Los Angeles. He's Director of the California Seek Council. He's not here yet?
Is he walking in? He's walking in. I don't see him walking in.
One moment.
We have to think of another way to write that for you. Why is that? Well, it was just a gentleman. He's a president. I'm always... He's a president. He thinks he's a president. That's the problem. He thinks.
We're gonna have a 60-second recess.
He thinks he knows he's a president.
We've already introduced you, Mr. Singh, but...
Well, thank you, and I do apologize for holding you all up. I should know better about the 4:05 coming out of LA.
That is quite a sacrifice to be here.
It's an honor to be here. All right, first of all, I definitely want to thank you all for inviting me here this afternoon. This is a very important moment in time where we honor our dedicated public officials and ask for divine guidance in their very important duties as they serve the community. Lancaster is a wonderful place to live. It is a community where Christians, Muslims, Hindus, Buddhists, Sikhs, Jews, behind Native Americans, and many others can live together in peace and prosperity, making their homes and raising their families in a safe, clean, and progressive environment. I'm gonna begin this invocation today with the first parry of Japji, the beginning prayer in the Sikh scriptures. Ekon kar, satnam, karta purk, nir bao, nir veer, akal murat, ajuni saibong, gurprasad jap. Ad such, jugad such, hebe such, nanakosibhi such. What this means, one God created this creation. Truth is His name. He is the doer of everything. He is fearless, without anger, undying, unborn, and self-illuminant. This is revealed through divine wisdom. Meditate on God. God was true in the beginning. He is true throughout all of time. At this very moment, He's true, and He shall ever be true. Infinite Lord, we ask that you bless this gathering of community leaders, that you inspire them with the wisdom, the grace, and the humility to guide and protect those they are responsible for and to. May they work in dedication and unity to protect the rights of the citizens they serve and help build this community to its utmost potential. We ask this in your name, Lord, however we may call you. Amen. Ameen. Satnam. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Vice Mayor Smith, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Raise your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is that for me? No, okay. Okay, we have a presentation today for our student speaker. It's Kobe.
Kobe Wibowo is nine years old, and he goes to Jack Northrop Elementary School. Come on up, Kobe.
Hi Kobe, how are you? Nice to see you.
Hello. My name is Kobe Wibowo, and my subject today is Cinco de Mayo. We have probably all heard of Cinco de Mayo, Spanish for the 5th of May. How many of us know the significance of that date? Do we think of it as the date when Mexico declared independence from Spain? That is not it. Mexico declared independence on September 15, 1810. But May 5, 1862, is the date which is celebrated by Cinco de Mayo. During the American Civil War, French Emperor Napoleon III decided to invade Mexico and make it part of the French Empire, knowing that the United States was too busy to stop him. He chose a man named Maximilian, along with his wife Carolina, to be new leaders of Mexico. Napoleon's French army had not been defeated in 50 years, but that was about to change. On May 5, 1862, the Mexican forces led by General Zaragosa and Colonel Porfirio Diaz won a great victory over the French forces, turning the tide of the war. As soon as the Civil War was over, an American force led by General Phil Sheridan rushed to Mexico to help drive out the remaining French soldiers. The Mexicans have always appreciated the help from their American friends. Cinco de Mayo celebrates freedom and liberty on both sides of the border. Thank you.
That was wonderful. Thank you. The Athlete of the Month is Kiana Matthews. Did I pronounce that right? Good. The May recipient of the Mayor's Athlete of the Month is a sophomore basketball star, Kiana Matthews from Antelope Valley High School. Kiana is a sophomore at Antelope Valley High School, has been among the league leaders with an average of 17 points, four assists, eight rebounds, and three steals per game. They got it down, don't they? Kiana was named the Golden League Player of the Year, the Valley Press Player of the Year, and was voted Team Most Valuable Player by her peers. And she's only a sophomore. Wow. Kiana has led AVI to its first Golden League Championship since 2002, led the team to quarterfinals of the CIF playoffs. She currently maintains a 3-0 with emphasis on business and education classes. She volunteers with Team Ring, which as respect is earned, not given, a basketball club that focuses on life skills as a major part of its program. She participates in the Team Builders Club at school with a focus on drug-free activities. She has already been generating interest from Loyola, Marymount, and UC San Diego. Go to San Diego, it's much better. For her outstanding accomplishments in athletics, academics, and in the community, I'd like to present Kiana Matthews with the Mayor's Athlete of the Month Award. Thank you so much. And only a sophomore. We're also dedicating this as Public Service Week. The Public Works Infrastructure and Services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, engineers, administrators representing the City of Lancaster who design, build, and operate and maintain the systems essential to serve our citizens. An agreement with SolarCity for construction of photovoltaic electric generators at six city facilities would save the city over $5 million. And capital engineering completed approximately $18 million in construction and design of C... TP? CIP? You know, they make it so very scroll-y and very interesting, but you can't read it. Projects. And the mainland services has placed 1,600 tons of asphalt, 73,000 gallons of crack-sealed materials, and poured a total of 565 yards of concrete. Traffic engineering implemented a traffic signal, timing, and coordination plan to reduce the number of stops, delays, and emissions in fuel consumption. And utility services cleaned 75 miles of sanitary sewer lines and inspected 3,000 manholes. And as a result of all this work, Lancaster City Council has hereby proclaimed May 16 through the 22nd, 2010 as Public Services Week. You know, we hear a lot about everything from the timing of the traffic signals as being a grand conspiracy to what you've done with the solar energy is truly revolutionary. And the traffic signals, you know, there's a real science to that, and it's a science that your department has brought to the city, and we're grateful for that. It not only saves energy, it is really state-of-the-art. We appreciate that. Okay, moving on. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City Manager, any items to be removed from the...
No, sir.
Agency Consent Calendar? Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion? Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards. I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar for the Redevelopment Agency.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Any items on the Council Consent Calendar you'd like to pull for discussion or do...
No, sir.
No speaker's cards?
Let's vote. Let's have a motion.
I'll move that we adopt the Council Consent Calendar.
There's a second?
I'll second.
Should be a short meeting. Okay, we'll now open the joint public hearing and hear staff report from the Housing Director, Elizabeth Brubaker. Or am I ahead of myself?
There are no speaker's cards.
Thank you. You wanna waive the report? Okay, we'll waive the report. I know how much you wanted to come up and practice your public speaking skills, Liz, but... Okay. Okay, is there a motion? Now let's close the public hearing.
I'll move that we adopt JPH 1.
I'll second that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me change that. I will... We have to do it separately. I will move that we adopt Resolution Number 1024 for the city.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
I'll move now that we adopt the Agency's Resolution Number 11-10.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. Okay, we're now... Yeah, we're now open the public hearing and hear staff report from Elizabeth Brubaker on PH 1.
There are no speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
Shall we waive the report?
I agree. Current.
Good. Is there a motion? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the 2010-2015 Five-Year Consolidation Plan, Consolidated Plan.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. And allow me to thank you for getting that working so well. It hasn't worked this well in 30 years. Who is responsible? Is that your turn? Well, tell them how much we appreciate it. Okay, we'll now hear a staff report from City Attorney under New Business Item 1, Dave McEwen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yet before you, an ordinance that will amend the provisions of the municipal code related to your commissions that will amend the sunset dates for the commissions. If you recall, the two commissions in question, sunset, I think as of the end of June this year. So this ordinance will extend those sunset dates.
One year?
Yeah, I think that's what we provided.
I think it's two.
Or two years.
Two years.
Sorry, two years. It was to coincide with the term of the mayor.
I see. Okay. Good. Your motion, speakers?
I'll move that we adopt or we introduce Ordinance Number 943.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Moving on to New Business Item 2, any speaker cards?
No speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
You wanna waive the public hearing? I mean, the public...
Staff report?
Yes, that's what I meant.
Unless there's objection, of course.
Okay. Is there a motion?
That being the case, I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 10-25.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to Council Agenda Item 1. The... Oh, this is mine, isn't it? Let me give you the list of who I'll be nominating and will vote on next meeting for the Planning Commission. The chairman will be James Voss, Raj Malley. The following people will be members Raj Malley, Daniel Jacobs, Cassandra Harvey, Randy Hall, and Kitty Zato. The Architectural Design and Planning Commission will be... The chairman will be April Bartlett. Members will be Matthew Buchanan, Timothy Wiley, Andrew Mercy, Dennis Greer, Diana Cook, and Courtney Stallworth. The Neighborhood Vitalization... Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission will be Brett Banks, Stephen Derryberry, Riza Schepler, Tim Stertavent, Lou Stoltz, and... Yeah, that'll be it for this. I'll have some more in two weeks. The Criminal Justice Commission will be Mark Brown, Jim Koppel, Conception Harris, David Vera, Sandy Smith, Tim Fuller, and Alex Wheeler. We vote on that in two weeks. Is that right?
That's correct. We'll put it on the agenda in two weeks.
Thank you. City Managers' Executive Directors' Announcements.
No, sir.
City Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for any person to address the City Council on items that are non-agendized. You may find the speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you complete these as clearly as possible so that if necessary, the City Council, the City Manager, or city staff will be able to contact you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when you start to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Spanish pronunciation, Nieto. Well, as you can tell by my shirt, no mistaking where I work, that would be Magic Mountain.
I used to work there.
I've recently had the experience of commuting to work. This is the first job I've ever worked outside of the Antelope Valley, and it's gaining... Very quickly, I gained a lot of insights on what it's like to drive the freeways and especially what it's like to get to the freeways from my house. And I thought it was appropriate that on the agenda today was some Public Works matters. Or at the very least, there was a presentation about the Public Works. And best as I understand it, street signal coordination is part of Public Works. So I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the street signal coordination in Lancaster, specifically concerning the intersection of 10th Street West and Avenue L, which is probably what most people used to get on the freeway, I would say, anyway. I have noticed that as I'm going west on Avenue L towards 10th Street West, I arrive at the intersection, and I arrive at a red light. And that's fine, it's a major intersection. But what I notice is what's past the intersection. There's another signal at the entrance to the Costco parking lot. That signal is green the entire time that the 10th Street West signal is red. Enters red at the very moment the 10th Street West signal turns green. And there is a very large backup of cars coming off the freeway waiting to make their left turn into Costco. And they get their chance to go right when the Avenue L traffic is allowed to cross 10th Street West. And it would seem to me something a bit more logical that this large line of cars gets their chance to go when nobody's coming towards them. So that would be when 10th Street West is red, the signal at Costco ought to be green. And vice versa. My time's getting limited, so I also had on mind a suggestion about, since we're redoing Lancaster Boulevard, I had a quick suggestion that we use Avenue I to run our parades. There's a lot of businesses along there. It's a neighborhood that could use some revitalization, and I can see the very real benefit of running parades along Avenue I to draw people to that neighborhood and sort of as a form of neighborhood revitalization. I'm even thinking events... So I'll finish my sentence. I'm even thinking events such as the go-karts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Neal, will you look into that signal issue? Thank you.
Can you hear me all right? Okay, I've written something that I'm going to read. This is all I have left, pretty much, of my husband. "My name is Nancy Acosta. I live in Lancaster, and I vote in every election because I know what those votes cost. My husband volunteered for the Marine Corps, and he died so I could vote. I voted in the last election for one of the candidates who lost. I can't help but wonder if my vote would have helped my candidate win if over 2,000 votes had not gone missing. I guess I should go out to my husband's grave and say to his headstone, Francisco, 'Over 2,000 votes have gone AWOL from the last election, and the City Council does not know what happened, and they do not care. So I guess you and all your buddies suffered and died for nothing. Somebody stole my vote.' Also, I am a born-again, spirit-filled Christian. I come from three generations of Baptist ministers and missionaries on both sides of my family. I know you all say you are Christians, so you should know that as Christians, all five of you and I are supposed to avoid even the appearance of evil and wrongdoing. And what the five of you have done in regards to the election and the over 2,000 missing votes appears evil and wrong. That is all I have to say. I'm not going to speak extemporaneously because then I would start swearing with anger. I was married to a Marine Corps combat veteran." I was married to a Marine Corps combat veteran for over 38 years, and I can swear with the best of them. So I took two weeks to calm down before I came here. That is all.
Thank you. David Ehrlich?
Council Mayor, Vice Mayor, how are you?
Good evening.
Congratulations on our newly started, some of our new people here. As we approach some unprecedented times, both socially and economically, it's probably time to ask ourselves where we stand. We need to ask ourselves what's morally right and wrong. The primaries approach us. We look at the last election, see how many people really turned out, and it doesn't look like too many did. The primaries are quickly approaching us. I hope that everybody gets involved in this. We have, what's going to be on the ballot, and last time I was here, I spoke about this, AB 32. What's going to be on the ballot is something to slow this down, but I don't, I don't think, because the main plan, I don't think that even if we vote on it, they're going to try to stop. There's just too much money involved in this AB 32. The banks are already set up. It's obvious what's going on. I mean, a thousand-point drop in the market on the same day that the Senate has a bill on the floor to audit the Fed. So it sounds like the bankers did that. And I just hope, as you being our City Council, our leaders, the lobbying's going to be strong, the pressure's going to be strong to keep AB 32 going. And we know how much, how much business we've lost, how many jobs we've lost because of this global warming initiative. Actually, I hope you, Mr. Christ, and Ms. Marquez, I hope to be sitting on the Central Committee with you folks as well. And I don't know if you know what's going on in LA, but if you take a look at the Central Committee, you'll see that we're pretty split. So we need to, we need to get that back together so we get people involved in the community again. Because this, this whole oligarchy's been built from the top down. And the only way to take it apart is from the bottom up, and this is, this is where it starts, is right here, within the city. And that's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. M. Feller?
I want to address remarks made to me at the last City Council meeting. After complaining about divisive remarks on Ms. Marquez's Facebook page, Mr. Paris championed the council's right to say whatever they want as often as they want, saying it's freedom of speech. Mr. Paris then attacked me for being a fan on an anti-Rex Facebook page. The irony being, the player is all for freedom of speech for a select few, but not all. I would like to point out that I am not a city representative, and Mr. Paris is not a centuries-old religion with over a billion followers, 10,000 that call the valley their home. Mr. Paris appears to be for freedom of speech when he agrees with what's being said and against freedom of speech when he disagrees with what's being said. Mr. Paris disagrees with being called a dog killer. I'm sure he's aware that dogs being removed from the owners are not being put on a farm somewhere to roll in the grass and chase butterflies. Mr. Paris spoke of me promoting the Get Paris Out of Lancaster Facebook page in my emails. My question would be, how does Mr. Paris have access to my emails? Mr. Paris says he was portrayed with a Nazi symbol on his forehead, and he construed that to convey a death threat. There was no Nazi symbol, just as there was no death threat. I believe Mr. Paris knows this, but it does sound better to be calling something a death threat rather than saying he was mocked. Unfortunately, we can't check because the picture, one of many, has been removed from that page, probably from someone who doesn't share Mr. Paris's love of freedom of speech. There have been pro-Paris supporters who were never banned on that page, nor were their comments ever deleted. In summary, Sherry's allowed to mock other religions and lifestyles, but citizens should never be allowed to mock REX. We should be concerned that Mr. Paris's children might see him being mocked, but we should be unconcerned that Islamic children will see their god mocked. Mr. Paris says death threats are everywhere, which they're not. And no one should ever mention REX's stance on dogs or what happens to dogs he's had removed from their homes. So much for freedom of speech.
Thank you. Your time's up. The picture in question, just so the audience wants to know, was removed by Facebook because Facebook thought it was threatening. Just so everybody knows what happened. It was also investigated by the Sheriff's Department. That's the last time I'll comment on whenever this person speaks, but I thought that we should clarify that. Thank you. Yeah, we have a card from David Eber.
Good evening, council members, staff, and citizens. Welcome to the council, Mr. Chris. I hope you're able to maybe give this council a bit of a conscience. I've got a few things to cover, you know? Seems to me we got a lot of things ahead of us as the new council. We're allied art suit lawsuit coming up this month, the election lawsuit that we have. Election's going to probably be overturned, I would imagine. I don't know whatever happened with the Mongols lawsuit. Maybe the claim ran out, but public would like to know what the status is. I don't. I had to make six calls recently to get some weeds taken from behind the alley between 12th Street West and 10th Street. I think that's quite a few calls to get it done. They said that they were short on manpower, so hopefully we can get something to address that. Also, I've noticed quite a bit of graffiti lately. Something that really caught my attention was an article in the paper the other day with the mayor hammering Roger John Diamond and some of the things he said. Don't believe I see Mr. Diamond calling you an ambulance chaser, but just because he defends people that have lawsuits, there's no reason to take shots at him. But then again, the paper writes erroneous things sometimes, so maybe they did once again. I've got an issue here when I was at the groundbreaking recently, out there at the BYD, and we're still trying to get to the bottom of, I was removed from that groundbreaking ceremony when I was doing nothing whatsoever inappropriate. And we can't even get to the bottom of who gave the order to have four sheriffs forcibly remove me. And I think that that's time that this gets addressed and answered. It's, if the citizens can't move about this community freely to peacefully assemble, speak, practice their religion, so forth and so on, then we're in a lot of trouble as a community. You know, I talked about the 10,000 jobs that were supposed to come here, and not a single job came, but maybe in the future that'll happen. You know, I'm really concerned with Mr. McEwen's track record on lawsuits. He's not fared too well, and he's facing three or four more, and I'm getting ready to file one myself. With the last 30 seconds left, I only came here for one reason this evening, and that was to take a moment of silence. 15 years ago today, I lost my father. He was probably one of the greatest men to ever walk the streets of Lancaster, and I'm sure he's proud. And I'm here today doing the things to try to make this a better community and to live in for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that concludes the speaker cards. Okay, any council agency comments?
We have a couple of council reports that we've included. If you have any questions, the AQMD. The one thing on the AVTA that I'd like to add is that we've been working for a couple of years to try to find an intelligent way to protect our capital, and not only in the buses, but on the engines and getting them on the streets. And so we're, we did a pilot program of taking the parts in-house, and now we're looking at the AVTA as taking the maintenance in-house to protect the buses. So that's about it, unless you have any other questions.
That's it? That's moving on. We'll now recess for the purpose of conducting the closed session, and we'll be back in probably 30 minutes. I would like to thank the Sikh community for coming tonight. So how's the mosquito infestation coming? Should we be worried about West Nile, or what?
Not much yet.
Oh.
I'll tell you after.
Okay. We're back in session? City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the City Council met in closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9A concerning the Antelope Valley groundwater cases, received a report and gave direction concerning that matter. And then under Government Code Section 54956.9A, again, concerning the Rubin versus City of Lancaster case, gave direction concerning that one. And then under Government Code Section 54956.9B, I'm sorry, A again, concerning the Cedar Street cases, gave direction concerning that litigation. And finally, under 54956.9B, concerning the Irvin versus Lancaster case that was threatened last Thursday in the news conference for which we have yet to be served. We gave direction on that case, when and if it's finally served. Beyond that, no other reportable actions.
Oh. Somebody could have told me. We had a quorum. Okay, we're good to go? Thank you. We're now going to recon, oh, we're going to adjourn until Tuesday at May 25th, 2010 at 5:00 PM. Carol, I'm coming home, and I'm starving.